Oh, I'm Marsha Herbert, President of the Board of Education. On behalf of the Board, I would like to welcome the members of the delegation and our county commissioners to this joint meeting. Delegate Tomlinson tried his best to come today, and we were talking back and forth, but he just couldn't work it out with his work schedule. We appreciate the opportunity to come together well in advance of the legislative session to talk about the issues and challenges we are facing. It's our sincere wish that the outstanding working relationship, open communication, and meaningful dialogue we have developed will continue. As I've said many times before, when we are able to come together and work to find solution, it sends a clear message to our community that the education of our students is the top priority in Carroll County. I would now like to turn things over to our Superintendent, Dr. McCabe.
Thank you.
Take it away.
Good afternoon, and thank everyone for being here this afternoon. We appreciate all of your support for us in the school system, and we also appreciate your thoughtful engagement with us over time, over the years. We have six topics to discuss today within the hour and a half that we have together. So it could be a bit of a challenge, as each of the six could probably take more than an hour and a half. So we will, we will do the best we can in the time that we have. We have three topics from the Board of Education. Those are budget planning, Maryland Blueprint, and Silver Oak Academy. And then we have three topics from the county commissioners. That's our Board of Education cellphone policy, our standardized test results, and the additions to Freedom Elementary and Sykesville Middle Schools, the status of those projects. And I think we're going to be able to address the additions to Freedom in Sykesville in our first talk on budget planning. So hopefully, we can kill two birds with one stone there. So we will go ahead and get started, and please feel free to stop us as, as we begin with the budget and ask any questions you have and/or have any discussion that is warranted at that time.
Excuse me, Dr. McCabe.
Yes.
We had said at one point that our joint meeting minutes would be accepted when we meet in joint session again.
Oh, thank you.
So I'd like to make a motion that we accept the minutes of April 10th.
Thank you.
Second, discussion, all those in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, the passage unanimously.
All right, and with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Burke.
Good afternoon. I know we have a busy agenda, so I'll try not to go into too much detail here, but want to hit on a few highlights of our fiscal year '26 budget process as it will begin here through the fall. And so we'll jump in. Am I working? There we go. So we are in the midst of preparation and internal planning internally, developing cost estimates and so forth as we head into what will be our budget process beginning in December for the public. Still on the early side to nail down revenue estimates, but as far as state funding projections, the biggest driver of state funding is built into state law in the blueprint per pupil amount. So those are known. I'll touch on that again in a moment. Our enrollment figures will play a big role. We will know those, the bigger enrollment number here at the end of the month and some of the specific student populations at the end of October. So over the next two months or so, we'll begin to nail down the enrollment figures that will have a role on our, on our state revenues for sure. Of course, you know, all becomes more finalized as we get the governor's budget, as session begins, as we get into January. I believe our Board of Education will be considering the superintendent's recommended budget on January 8th. That's the first day of the General Assembly session. So unfortunately, those two things, you know, sort of happening at the same time. And then, as you know, we'll be back to adopt the Board's budget request at the February meeting. So often, we have a little better handle on state revenues as we get closer there. Yes, sir. Mr.?
If I can ask, as you go through this, if there are significant changes from FY '25 development to FY '26?
Okay.
Please highlight them, so, you know, we know that these are significant changes.
Will do.
Just be, have to be situationally aware or addressed.
Yeah. We'll touch on a few of those.
And speaking of that, is, is it a gut feeling on enrollment and student population? Is it still slightly increasing?
Yes, sir. I'll look at right to see if he has an exact number. My memory of the most recent 10-year projection is, on average, it's 200-ish students per year of an increase for specifically for next year, do you know? About, about in that range. And that's been, you know, we've been pretty accurate a year to five years out. So that's roughly where we would anticipate. The question gets into the special groups of students. We don't so much necessarily know each, each of those as well.
So I think I'll touch on a few of the things you just brought up there as we begin again looking at fiscal year '26. From the county side of things, we appreciate the investment that was made in fiscal year '25. As we're looking into fiscal year '26, the amount of planned funding in the county's five-year plan is very helpful, in the range of 7.2 million of increase year over year. And as, as you know, state funding increase was limited in '25, and we relied on that county effort for fiscal year '26. We believe that we'll be able to use a firm planning number of the county's amount there. I want to just clarify and be clear, sometimes these terms get used interchangeably. But again, this is the county's funding level as it currently exists in '25, moving into '26. Not maintenance of effort, sort of a different calculation in state law around minimum funding requirements. So the county has, you know, been slightly above maintenance of effort for a number of years, and we will, you know, continue to plan based on county revenue projections.
And, and I'd like to mention, the past Board of Commissioners asked Board of Ed to commit and buy into the five-year budget, because prior to that, they really weren't. And since then, they actually changed some of the numbers and averaged things out, and, and that's worked, except for blueprint.
Yeah, as you know, certainly this past year, with Blueprint created some difficulties in doing that and some challenges that we had. So as we're looking into '26, our anticipation is using that number. As we look at the state revenues, as I mentioned, per pupil increases built into state law there. You'll recall that the increase coming into fiscal year '25 was really one of the smallest state funding increases over the whole 10-year plan, about 1.7% that was. As we look into fiscal year '26, the funding year over year per pupil goes up about 5%. So, so that will provide some, some more balanced relief for our revenues.
And our team has really worked hard, and they've got down to the nitty-gritty, to that 7.2. And I really don't want to bring this up, but I'm just going to tell you, the last time we had an MOE, we closed three schools. So that's, that's, that's a big chunk of change if, if you all would do that. And, and that's what would happen. So I just know that, you know, we are very cautious. We always give you our, our whole budget. We prepare ahead of time. The team does a great job, and we aren't doing any fluffy things. We are just doing bare bones. So I just wanted to tell you that 7.2 million is very, very important, or we'll be cutting a lot of teachers.
So Mr. Kyler, if I might kind of circle back to your, your prior comment. I think you're absolutely right, like the, with the prior Board of Commissioners and when you were on this side of the street. We had a lot of discussions with the Commissioner saying, you know, for prior years and prior cycles, the, the school board ended up being like a balancing item, right? Like it's, you kind of did everything else that you needed to do, and then whatever was left kind of went to the school system, and it was very difficult to plan around that, right? And that's when we went ahead and, and we averaged things out over the five-year period like you, like you just stated a few minutes ago. And that made it so much easier to plan going forward. And so I think that you guys on, on your side of the street have kind of kept to that over the last four or five years, and we really appreciate that because it just makes the planning process so much better. Of course, Blueprint has blown that up a bit, but just want to make sure that your philosophy moving forward is still the same, right? That you, you create the five-year plan, you expect it to be sort of a level amount that gets contributed for, for Board of Ed every year. Because I think that's worked really well. Just want to make sure that philosophically, we're still on the same page with the Blueprint, certainly throwing wrenches into everything.
And I, I think in a meeting like this, I can answer how I feel about it. I'm not sure I can answer how we feel about it. But yeah, I think, because I remember when, and like I say, the, the Budget Office and the Commissioners kind of insisted on it, and we bought into it. And so I think barring emergencies like we saw several years ago, yeah, I'm, I'm bought into it. And, and I think last year was an anomaly, and you guys need to buy into it also.
Of course. Yeah, totally agree that last year was an anomaly, and it, it was a struggle for everyone. And yeah, I don't think we can thank you guys enough for working through us with, with that situation. But I'm sure Marsha was about to say, you know, we're, we're here now, but we're not going to be here for the, the future of the budget discussion. So we just want to kind of make sure we understand what the, the planning is.
Yes, because we ran on having a good working relationship with Commissioners eight years ago. Now, that first year or two, it was tough. But I hope, I'm sure this group here will continue on, because we will be done in December, and I will still be vocal, and she will too, and but.
Surprise, surprise.
But I've been able to thank.
She has to be among the first ones who sign up to make a public comment.
Don't worry about that. But we, I've been able to thank you. It's a great working relationship. We need to continue that, because that's the only way it works.
Do any of you guys have thoughts or questions on that?
Well, I'd like to, the, the per pupil level increase, I think you said was about 5%. How much is that in terms of dollars?
So the, that's a, this is, this is just a rough estimate sitting here. The, when the per pupil number goes up, whether it's the foundation per pupil or the targeted student groups, that, you know, that's the ideal in state law, and then that cost is shared. So if you see like the state base per pupil, that's not the full amount per pupil that the state pays. So in the foundation column of, of the spreadsheet of the formula, which is the flexible money, the board, the money that the board would have, some more discretion under the Blueprint constructs to use. 5% on the foundation be seven.
A little under that.
A little under 7 million.
And that funding comes in, goes specifically toward things that are related to Blueprint, or you have greater flexibility beyond Blueprint to use the money elsewhere?
With the foundation money, greater flexibility. When you get into the other columns of the formula, Special Ed, Compensatory Ed, ESOL, et cetera, those, we treat them essentially as restricted at this point. But they, they do, Commissioner, have an effect on the overall budget. So for instance, we're, you know, we have teachers who we pay with Compensatory Ed funding because they're focused in schools with high concentrations. So that money can be used, you know, for those teachers' costs and ongoing and increased costs. So it's, there's an impact on the system's budget as a whole, but the foundation is really the only area where there's sort of, where there's a much higher level of discretion for the Superintendent and the Board.
Everything's so restricted, and that's where that, it has to go in that silo. So that foundation helps us pay our teach, you know, where, how are we going to pay teachers? So, and with inflation and everything else. And we are at bare bones, because as Dr. McCabe has said years ago, we've cut over 300 teachers. And Baltimore County didn't do that, Frederick County didn't do that, and they have all these extras where they can move them around.
So.
We went, yes. We can't move them around.
Yeah, and so there's a lot more coming on that under the Blueprint section.
Okay, I didn't mean to jump ahead.
No, no, it's okay. I would say that last year, the state sort of unlocked the spreadsheet that is the formula for locals, and we use that tool. And I know that Rob and Drew in our Budget Office probably hate when I say things like this, but using that unlocked tool, they were very, very accurate in predicting state aid. However, it's, it gets more accurate or more likely to be accurate after we have the September 30 enrollment number. And then after October 31, which is when we get, when the state verifies the other enrollments, the enrollment figures for Special Ed students, Comp Ed students, et cetera. So when we get into the fall a bit, then we start feeling more confident in what we think the state aid numbers will be.
Now, on that note, and I apologize again if I'm jumping ahead a little bit here. One of the questions that we had as a group last spring, students who fell under different funding categories, special needs, English is second, they hit more than one category. Did we ever figure out what the funding for those students would be? How, how that would be determined? Or is that still a question that's up in the air from the state?
My sense is it's fairly resolved. The state's position is that, that total amount of money would be spent in the school where the student is. So, you know, if a student, they wouldn't talk about it. I mean, they will say things like the money follows the student, but they wouldn't talk about necessarily spending money on a student. They would, you know, a student could be the base per pupil amount, or a student could be the base per pupil amount plus Special Ed plus Comp Ed. And if it's that student, those three totals of money, the state would look to be spent, at least at 75% in the school where the student is. And when you add that up at a school level, there's a lot coming up on that in a minute, but that's sort of the conversation the Superintendent's been leading the last couple of springs. That hasn't gone away.
I was curious about that, and part of the reason why I brought that up is because I know we're going to be talking about Silver Oak Academy a little later on, and I was just curious how that ends up affecting something like this.
That is.
And if we want to wait till later, that's okay to talk about that. Because I don't want to, I don't want to upend the schedule on everybody, but.
I mean, the, the changes to Silver Oak, and I was, I'll just jump into it. Silver Oak is reopening as, as a, as part of the resident childcare program through the Department of Mental Health. They're going to be taking students, students, as they, and we've established a, a team of folks who are working collaboratively with them, but students with very high-intensity mental health needs, students who may be in a residential treatment center and not be successful in that residential setting and might need more supports, students who may be in a hospitalization, but the timing available for that hospitalization has run out. So students with very intensive needs. For us, it's going to work a lot like foster care, which we're, we don't necessarily get credit for students at Silver Oak who, through the Blueprint, in, in a sense. The, the school is opening as a type III non-public placement, which is a 60 to 90-day diagnostic program. That's an MSDE program. There'll be limited funding that comes as part of this. There'll be increased responsibilities. We're required by law to do certain things under a type III. So we'll work through all of that as it goes, but there's not a, there's not going to be increased funding through the Blueprint as a result of their expand, of their reopening, I guess.
And we're responsible for those children, and just the tip of the iceberg. We have to make sure that they're educated. Plus, they, we have to pay for transportation for all these, and this is something new, and it's probably a million dollars.
I'm sorry, I did not mean to jump ahead. I'm sorry about that.
It's okay.
Just as a follow-up from some of Joe's questions, and if this is more appropriate during the Blueprint discussion, but as you, as you mentioned, there, there are different categories where the per pupil spending is. What percentage of our children throughout the county fall into those special categories? And what percentage are just regular?
For Compensatory Ed, it's about a quarter of our population. And I'll, I'll look to my colleague, Mr. Shockney, to correct me or revise my numbers. For Special Ed, around 12% of our total population, which is 26,000, give or take. And for, what am I missing? For ESOL, which, and we're now at the state level, ESOL is now ML. So, and if we flip in and out of acronyms, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm still having a hard time with ML, which stands for multilingual learners, is two and a half, two and a half percent. I feel good, because I think I got those right, though.
We've been talking about that a lot.
The other, yeah. The, the other thing to say, Commissioner Vigliotti, about your question would be, one challenge when a new program or school opens, and a different example would be systems that have opened charter schools in the past. We haven't yet, but you know, we might. In that first year, if those students weren't our students and even weren't already our students, the students who now would be in that charter school, they're not in the September 30 from the year before enrollment. And so that's an unseen, an unplanned budgeting expense to deal with, most especially in that first year. And even if they were our students, it's sort of a different allocation of existing money. So there's some, you know, there's sort of a ramp up into that kind of a program, or it can be if, if those, if those students presently aren't in our enrollment counts, if that makes any sense.
But with the charter school, we're responsible to pay the teachers and, and things like that that people don't understand. They're still under our umbrella, and they still have to file a blueprint. So if someone does do a charter school, we have a lot more bills to pay.
Is this something that is, is on the horizon? Is this something that you guys see is going to end up happening sooner rather than later, that a charter school will be established?
Well, most districts, many districts have at least one charter school. So at any time, it could happen. So, you know, we stay open to that possibility and to work with folks if, if they want to do that so that they understand that, what the difference is between a charter school and a private school. And a charter school has to follow all of our, the federal, state laws as well as local policy.
And Mr. Shockney just corrected me, which is good. The Silver Oak example, not so analogous to a charter school. The, the patterns of funding and what we pay for would be different than that. So that wasn't a great example on my part.
To piggyback that, and if any of this is coming up, I'll be patient. But you have a number of students you provide transportation to other schools, other special needs kind of things. What percentage is that?
The, the number of students, so we, we roughly have 80 students who attend what we would call a non-public placement. And many of, of those 80 attend the Maryland School for the Blind and School for the Deaf. So that, those students are looped into that category. But, but we, you know, those are students whose needs can't be met with our resources. So we, we're responsible for, you know, for, for their education. So we, we will contract with a, a non-public provider in, in the general area, most of which are in the Baltimore metropolitan area, some in the Frederick area, some in Columbia.
And, and that's your responsibility?
We're responsible, because they're residents of, of us. What's a little unique with, with the Silver Oak piece is it's a lot like foster care. So, you know, the, they're being placed at Silver Oak through DMH. When they first show up, we do a, a best interest determination meeting, which kind of figures out where the student is. Are they going to continue attending, you know, their, their, their most recent school? Are they well enough to be in a, in a school? Do they need some sort of period of stabilization? And then, but we're, because they're technically residents of our county, at that point, we're responsible for something called child find. So determining if a child is eligible for Special Ed services. If they are, it's a, the, the continuum that any resident could be afforded in our county, whether they might be attending the, the local school or something as restrictive as a, as a non-public placement. Now, if that student needs a non-public placement, we would be working with that local school system where that student came to us from and be working out billing with, with them. And again, that's all determined by a team. And, and we don't know, we've, we've, the original plan from Silver Oak is that they were going to start with the most intensive needs students. I think some recent feedback is they might work with some lesser intensive students to get started. We still don't know. So we have a standing meeting with them on Thursdays with lots of folks from Student Services and Special Education here in preparation of, of students enrolling. But, so we'll, we're staying tuned for that as to, as to how that's going to go.
And Mr. Shockney, I want you to explain to them how you got that number down to 80?
Oh, so there was, yeah, there was, there was a time where we had well over 120 students attending a non-public placement, and then we developed some specialized programs in, in Carroll County. Our autism program, which now we're just, it's still the same program. We're calling it the success program. But that was a big piece, so we were able to bring a lot of students back, because there's tremendous expense to a non-public placement. Typically, the cost of the non-public placement is, is shared between the LEA and the state. The state does reimburse us for some, but the majority of the, of the fees for, for tuition and transportation are, are on the local system. But we worked very hard to lower that number, which has resulted in a big savings.
Absolutely. It's been gigantic.
Many years, times.
Yes. So you all needed to just have a refresher on that, because they did that several years ago. And between getting rid of the 300 and then bringing autism back, that's really saved us, the Board of Education, a lot of money.
Couple of quick questions. One is, you brought up the 300 teachers that have left the system over time. Are the services still being provided in Carroll County public school system without those 300 teachers?
I'd say we're still providing the services. If we still had those 300 teachers, we would be in better shape for Blueprint, because we wouldn't, we would have more staff to work with, and we would have less to, we would have, when we have to raise class sizes in the southern region in order to move resources to the, to the west and north, we would have more bodies, more FTE to work with so that we wouldn't end up with class sizes of 45 in the southern region.
So doing a comparative analysis to other jurisdictions, we are well above other counties' class sizes in the southern part of the region with 40-plus.
We will be.
We will be. Not yet, but we will be.
Okay. The, there was an article recently in a paper, maybe a month or two ago, about how vacancies have been filled, and there's very few vacancies. Are those vacancies being filled minus the 300?
Correct.
So the 300 is actually recs. They're not, they're not open rec.
No, they're gone.
They're gone. They are 300 recs that have been completely gone. So the budget associated, the salaries associated. Everything associated is to the number of recs, which at one point was 300 more, but now is no longer.
Correct.
Is there a plan to bring back any of those 300?
We don't have the funding to do that. And as well, last year, because of part of the federal grants ending that we got through COVID, we also got rid of approximately 33. the federal grants ending that we got through COVID, we also got rid of approximately 33 teaching positions.
So we're talking 333?
Oh, yeah, north of that.
That have, yeah, left the system.
Yes, sir.
I wouldn't say that they've left the system. I would say they've been pulled out of the system because of funding situations, right? And so class sizes, we used to have very, much lower class sizes, I think, than, than others across the state. And now we're kind of, we've kind of normalized and gotten to the point where we're very similar to others across the state. But there's no fluff there for us now in order to move teachers around. So those positions have been pulled out of the system from a funding perspective.
Yeah, it's, it's probably a misnomer to say you lost teachers. You downsized the number of positions.
Downsized the workforce, because, yeah.
Gotcha.
Really quick. The 45 students, I understand using that as kind of a, a good standard baseline. Is that across elementary, middle, and high schools? What would, what would the numbers be by school type?
We're not sure yet. What you're going to see, I mean, definitely for elementary, and I'm just, I'm just pulling out 45 as a good estimate.
Sure.
What you're going to see at the high school level in particular is much fewer choices in courses. And so that will hit all of our high schools, because we won't have the teachers to teach some of the courses that we offer now that students may enjoy. But we're going to have to focus on the courses that are needed for high school graduation.
I think maybe if we move into the blueprint slides, we'll, so we're, we'll skip the last two slides on budget. If you have questions, call us back to those at any point. They were basically some of the bigger items we saw, and then some of our focus areas. So for.
My apologies. I know I completely derailed the order of things.
It's all Commissioner Vigliotti's fault.
Just so I can finish this, I, I'd like those, I'd like some view on those numbers before session, so that we can, when we're in our dialogues, we can use that, like, here's what we're looking at for elementary schools, middle schools, and high schools.
We should have plans by session, in advance of session, Delegate Stonka.
Flexibility that you got, that we've gotten a little bit of, won't, that, that's a temporary flexibility, correct? What we were here talking about last year, that we did succeed in getting some flexibility on, that doesn't, that's not, is that not permanent flexibility?
We got, we got a little bit of extra time to, to think through it. But right now, we have to have a plan ready to go for next school year, with how fiscally we will be at least 50% in compliance with blueprint.
Gotcha.
Senator Reedy, in your packets, I think in the back of the presentations, it's a document that looks like this, if you can see that across the room. That, that is the flexibility. So this is, this was just here for your reference, but this is the joint policy of the AIB and the State Board of Ed on fiscal compliance. And it basically offers a three-year window to full compliance, with, with year one being the fiscal year we're sitting in, and being compliant when we start fiscal '27. And so, if, you know, if you want to look at it while we're, while we're discussing, it's the last page above the signatures, number three, number three with the subbullets of A, B, and C, that kind of lays out the path to get there. So we did get.
We're, we're in slightly better shape than we were last year, but only temporarily.
We, we did get flexibility. And we're all over these slides at this point. I'm at the bottom half of this slide. And this goes back to Delegate Stonka's question. We have, the superintendent has formed a, not just a system-wide, because we have external stakeholders in, in the room as well. We have all of the appropriate associations. And we have outreach to other external folks. Not everyone has yet engaged, but they may. County government staff is very much, much engaged. So Roberta and Ms. Wyndham and Ms. Effingham are, are part of the process. Ted is petitioning me to be in the room, so I know he'll, he'll be there. And that's, it's helpful. It's helpful to have more folks involved. And, and fiscal compliance is not necess, a little bit, but it's not really so much about spending new money or new revenue. It's much more about reallocating existing resources into those columns or into those buckets, however you want to look at it. And that's how it's very hard to envision a scenario that stays away from changing class sizes. It's, it's impossible for me to envision a scenario in which our schools aren't structured differently tomorrow than they are today, and with some significance. How much that means for class size, that's the work of this work group. And our plans are to have a report in December. And we need a report in December for a lot of reasons. We need it to be part of the FY26 budget, which needs to comply with bullet B on that third page. We most certainly will have aspects of, of that process that will involve parts of our collective bargaining agreements, assignments of employees, timelines, processes. That needs to be known, so that there's ample time, or at least some time, to work with the associations on ironing out those things. There needs to be time to communicate with the school communities. Not necessarily going to tell you, I'm looking forward to that communication, but it, it's necessary, because it's, it's, you know, it's going to be different, and different, even if different could be viewed as good, which I'm not sure this will be. Change is, is challenging to work through. So there's a whole lot of reasons that Dr. McCabe said, you know, let's do this in the most comprehensive way possible. We're, we're hard at work. So far, we spent a lot of time, but necessary time, I think, making sure we've tried to provide a foundational level of knowledge to the members of the work group. And we have begun from there, the process of, okay, what are we going to do for students relative to the blueprint requirements? And the last part of that is a math equation to say, how are we going to pay or reallocate to make that happen? And so in some ways, it's not bad. We'd all love to do the best that we can for our students in every possible way. But for it to occur, something else has to change, because the money today is spent somewhere. And it has to be spent differently, perhaps, in the future. So that's, but our, our target date, Delegate Stonka, is late November. I don't know the specific date of our last session, but by December, we should have a draft report, at least to the superintendent. We, we should have something we, I'm looking at the superintendent, we should have something that we, we could share with the delegation headed into the session.
One last quick question. What is the average class size today?
Your 23-ish at the primary level, 25-ish, and primary, I mean, pre-K to, to two, 25-ish for the remaining, and then about 30 for middle. And then high school, approximately 30 as well, too. It's great variability in the high schools, because of our diverse course offerings. You'll see some classes with 35, 35 or more. And then you might see other smaller class sizes, because they're very specialized in some other instances.
Delegate Rose? So, right after that answer, and, and part of what Delegate Stonka was asking for, it concerns me when you say we're going to have less offerings for our students, which runs very counter to the entire purpose of the blueprint. Could you provide us maybe with a possible list of the types of classes that our kids would no longer have access to? Not, you know, I don't need it today, just in part of the response. As we're making those discussions, I think that's very relevant to why we might need, you know, some additional leeway.
I'm flipping everywhere at this point.
Yeah, sorry.
And I think, I think that's a perfect comment, though, Delegate Rose. Just, what ammo can we provide you to, to fight the battles in Annapolis? And, and also circling back to Senator Reedy's comment about the flexibility. I, I think that, you know, we did make some progress. You guys did a great job in making some progress on the, the flexibility portion last year, but it is temporary, right? But I think that we need to continue to push the envelope on that flexibility, because I think the reason why it happened is because we, as a county, like, we all kind of banded together, and we were loud and out there early and often. And I think people finally started to listen. So we don't want to let off the brakes on that, right? Because the flexibility is a key.
And I won't get into the weeds with it, but I will tell you, within our caucus, part of our leadership steering committee, we already have a work group working on that. And Dr. McCabe has already given me a lot of her key problems. And we are collecting that from other counties that are having similar issues. So we are planning a suite of, you know, bills and initiatives. And so any, any information that you can give us that really, as you said, bolsters our arguments would be very, very helpful. So, and I appreciate what you sent, and it's already been shared with.
And flexibility sounds so nice. But in reality, nothing in blueprint, none of the requirements have been relaxed or eliminated. You've just been given more time.
Given more time to get there.
To need all the same things.
Be compliant, right.
Yes, yes.
Right. But we're now, we really need the, so flexibility is, is a single word to talk about what really means all of this, right?
Which, which right now, it's only time.
Right.
You'd love more time, but you'd also love maybe relaxing some of the requirements.
Relaxing some of the comp ed requirements, and, you know, what, what can be put into foundation and things like that, so.
It would be very helpful.
Are you done? I'm sorry.
I'm, I'm done.
I thought someone else was speaking. Mr. O'Neil, since you brought this letter out, I want to ask about the poverty pupil ratio, because I know the poverty of our students is impacting our financial resources coming in. And it also is impacting the shifting of our teacher resources to different regions of the county. What is the trajectory we're seeing in childhood poverty? And how is that impacting the resources and the shifting of county? Is it going up? Is it going down?
Yeah. So there's a couple of ways to look at poverty, at least relative to the, to the blueprint. One is the compensatory ed number that we've been talking about. And that roughly is what we used to call the FARMs number, or the free and reduced meal student number. We have seen a dramatic increase in our percentage of students who are identified as compensatory ed, as has the rest of the state. That's actually a great point for a budget conversation as well. A couple of years ago, coming out of the pandemic, and I'm looking at the delegation, not to ignore the commissioners, you would have, you would recall vividly the dramatic increase statewide in compensatory ed, which I think has informed the trajectory of state funding of the blueprint, for that matter. There was, at the time, a theory, I kept hearing from state officials, that there was anticipation that that was artificially inflated. It had, it had some things to do with direct certifications during the pandemic, and that that number would come down. And, and it would have come down this year, if not. We're not seeing evidence of that. And I'm not hearing that being said anymore. So our.
Is it, is it that they're calculating it differently than they used to? Or is it legitimately it's up?
It was that, and I'd have to call on some people a little more knowledgeable than me. It, it had to do with forms of direct certification that opened up during the pandemic that I think they thought would close, and it would go back to sort of the, the parents signing up at some level. There's still some direct certification. I was talking to Ms. Sarno in Mr. Burke's office, with him just yesterday, I think. And where we are now with forms, the, sort of the old FARMs forms is, doesn't indicate a lower number next year. Now, all of that being said, we still have the lowest percentage of compensatory ed students in the state, and, and still by far. There's a gap from us to, to Howard County. But it's still a dramatic change for us. It also is what makes that compliance number that we keep talking about in compensatory ed so great, and proportionally much higher than I think I see in other school systems. But we're not able to plan that it would go down. So what does that mean for services? It, it means a lot of things. Our, our compensatory ed students don't perform at the level we would, we would desire, just like other counties in fiscal '23. When we received that big initial push of additional state aid, we, we, Superintendent McCabe thankfully had the foresight to have us restrict that money, so that that 38 million didn't become, you know, 11 more than that. And so Nick and his team looked at, and in a condensed timeline, by the way, like, all of a sudden, had to develop plans and look at how to best spend $11 million in new state aid in a portion of our schools that we identified as having the highest percentages of compensatory ed students. But Commissioner, or, I'm sorry.
It's okay. I hear it all the time.
Whoa, whoa, sorry, delegate. Many of those resource, some of those resources are classroom-based, some of those are teacher supports. Many of those resources have to do with behavior and mental health supports for students in those schools. I don't know if Nick wants to, Nick's good with that. Another aspect of blueprint and funding and programming in schools is what's known as concentration of poverty sites. We technically have two in Carroll County, which is extraordinarily low. We have the middle school portion of our alternative ed program, not the entire center, just the Crossroads Middle portion of what we commonly call Gateway. It, it was identified, it's actually already phasing out. So by the time we get to another budget cycle, Crossroads shouldn't be a concentration of poverty site.
It's good, but it's bad.
It's, it's, it's good and bad. And that's sort of one of those unintended consequences, I think, because that's, that's sort of, like, sometimes the state doesn't like when I refer to the funding columns as a grant, because it's not literally a grant. Concentration of poverty funding is a grant. And so if you have a, a school fluctuating in and out on that line, you're, you're trying to build services that then you, you either have to take away or figure out, how could you pay to sustain those? Tawny Town Elementary is very comfortably a concentration of poverty school. And it looks to us that it will remain such into the future. I, I don't see another one right now getting, getting there in the, in the near term. But that's a good thing. And that's part of, that's, that's an additional layer of those resources that we've, that we've put in schools like Tawny Town, just with compensatory ed money. And that's, you know, the concentration, I'm oversimplifying all this, but the concentration of poverty grants require hiring a coordinator and doing a needs analysis. And that's really very generally focused on adding sort of the wraparound services to the, to the students in that school community. So we have those two things, you know, in play in Carroll, just at a smaller level than, than a lot of places.
And just, just real quick, too. I think the, the reason why we're asking so many, all these questions is the count, you all were way ahead of most of your peers on what this implementation meant, how it impacted the county budgets and county taxes in the General Assembly. And personally, I spent a lot of time on this and will be in the next year, because it's an appropriations committee issue. And there has been a, kind of a standard benchmark from, I think the Senate as well, from, definitely from the House side, and the committee chairman, that this issue wasn't going to be taken up in the last two years. They were going to let all of you figure out the specifics of what, how it impacted your county, Howard County, et cetera, you know, different counties around the state. And that this year is when the negotiations open back up at the state level. And so you have from the House side, like, her side on policy, and my, or her committee on policy, and my committee on funding. And in the weeds, you have to kind of, it's weird to explain, but it's, you have to kind of understand what moves your committee chairman, and what they care about, so that you can use, use that framework for understanding. So I'll use, the committee chairman I work with came very, single, single family, poor family. The, the class sizes piece will impact him. And, and so there's specific things you have to understand about those, that you're bringing to them, so they can understand how funding mechanisms can work, which is why we had those questions. And he's having the questions around childhood poverty. So as we're digging in here, we're kind of, that, that, those conversations are starting now, and for the general public, those are starting now. And what I think Senator and myself, and, and my colleagues are working on is, my concern is that the General Assembly decides that the way to solve this problem without the General Assembly raising taxes is to increase base rates for county commissioners and county councils around the state to raise taxes locally. So there's counties like Kent County's a good example, there's one high school in Kent County. They are at the tax cap. They, they cannot raise local property taxes, their local income taxes a penny. So whenever they want to do additional things, they have to come to the General Assembly and ask the General Assembly to fund it, because the response they, it's a good response they have, I guess, which is, we're not allowed to raise taxes. So you can tell us, well, we should raise taxes to fund it. We're not allowed to. So what we are trying to really work on, at least in my committee with the chairman, is to, to really get an understanding of, it isn't a funding issue, it's a allocation issue. And what does that allocation issue create? So that's, that's just for the broad public and for everyone here. We're, the General Assembly is significantly behind all of you. And that was intentional by the General Assembly, but we want to make sure that when we're in these conversations, we're very precise with our answers.
Let me, I'll add on something, too, since we're talking about why we're asking so many questions. One, Josh makes, Delegate Stonka's excellent point about understanding the dynamics of personalities that we're dealing with, but also in their backgrounds and all of that. You know, the chairman of the Budget Committee of the Senate is, is a guy who is very passionate about the, the, they believe, he believed very strongly that Kerwin can revolutionize education and give all these greater opportunities. And I believe, I believe he's very sincere. I, I don't agree with, we obviously have some disagreements, but I, he's a very sincere person. But also, though, the Senate has said, we don't want to, and, and the governor has said, we do not want tax increases. Now, they ended up going along with some car-related tax increases, but basically they held the line the last session on major tax increases, because they're also sensitive to our business friendliness and some other things in the state. I don't. I don't know that the House, some of your, the House leadership, maybe the Democratic leadership may not be as sensitive to that. But, and so the challenge is really, the good news is, is our, our joint message has been, you actually have enough money in education that's coming in through the Kerwin provision that you don't, you haven't, if, if you just slowed down the implementation of Kerwin from a spending side, then you wouldn't need to raise taxes. It's also, if, almost a double onto that message or a pile onto that message, you, you also, you don't need to have locals raise taxes significantly if you just give a little more flexibility with obviously required accountability and reports and understanding that it's working. And it really is a message that works well together. Because what you all really need, if I'm speaking, I hope, I hope I'm not going to be wrong in saying this, what you all really need is the ability to say, hey, we're getting this much money. And there's some things we have to spend that money exactly a certain way, but if we could have a lot more flexibility in comp and in other areas, and obviously have to demonstrate that it's working properly, we really would be in a lot better financial shape. We could avoid having giant class sizes.
Yes.
I mean, that, that's a great example is, and, and when I, when we had meetings last interim, bringing up this issue quietly with people, there was a lot more receptiveness to, hey, we're not even saying, this isn't Carroll County saying we don't want to implement Kerwin. Politically speaking, a lot of us ideologically feel like it wasn't really the right approach, the way they did a lot of this stuff. But there's some good, good goals behind Kerwin. We're just saying we need the flexibility to make it work in our structure. Make some changes, but make it work in our structure. And so we just need to continue that. I think this is all what, information we can use to sort of filter through and try to continue to push that way. Hopefully the fact that every, there's major players in the state, but from the Senate president to the governor, that are on record saying they really don't want to raise taxes. Hopefully that's helpful in us having this discussion. Okay, here's a way you actually could still get to the goals that you want without, you know, without raising taxes, but also without really, really without dialing back the goals of Kerwin. Our goal ought to be getting rid of poverty, concentration of poverty. We should be like, there should be like extra money because you got rid of poverty. I mean, it's a, it's only going to throw us a break rather than losing money. So it's a, it's something we just have to all, I think, work on together.
It would be very helpful if we had incentives in the legislation to, to ease those restrictions. For example, we were second, I think, in ELA out of the 24 jurisdictions, third in math. If perhaps, if perhaps the General Assembly can just give waivers for comp ed, for example, for the top third or the top quartile of the 24 jurisdictions, then we could have the flexibility to not move a bunch of teachers next school year. But it's really important that we build incentives in, you know, and tie, tie it to MCAP, where you can have a third, top third, you're away from comp ed requirements. You can spend the money the way you want. You know, keep, keeping in the accountability and the reporting to make sure you don't fall out. But we really need to see some incentives in the legislation to give us flexibility at the local level.
And I think Senator, a, a way we sometimes talk about it and think about it, which goes along with what you've both just said, is there'd be a lot less angst if, if the Blueprint had been a prospective law. But in essence, it's sort of retroactive in that you're, you're having to go now and look at money already spent somewhere and, and reallocate. We didn't have a problem saying, wow, this much money in that, in that great giant leap year of comp ed from the state is, of course we want to do more things for the students in our schools with. So if it had just been going forward for all new revenue, you will do these things, that I, I don't think there would have been.
Because you could have built, you could have built the structure to spend that money that way, but you're, you're having to rebuild the plane while you're flying.
Yeah.
Drastic change.
And when you're us coming off the decade of budget reductions that Dr. McCabe's, you know, we, we view that as another little added thing. But philosophically, there's a lot of things we can get behind. The 11 million, Dr. McCabe and Nick aren't sad about using it for good things for kids. They're interested in now doubling back and saying, how well did those things work? What could we do more? What could we do better? What could we do differently? It's, it's the pain that's going to occur with the reallocation. But we have to plan for that. And so if you go back to where Rob was before we, we moved the conversation everywhere, you know, that, that 38 million cliff in comp ed, it's probably 2 million in ESOL. It's, you know, there's smaller numbers in other categories. We, we always talk about the biggest one. There's, we're not planning a budget to have you fund out of that. We're planning a budget based on your funding level, which means that $38 million cliff sits there to be addressed in the work group with a plan to move the system to compliance within two years. So that's, that's going to be a conversation for this community into the spring and beyond.
But I think back, there was a period of time, Mr. O'Neill, right, when they did change how we identified our comp ed. weren't the requirements changed? Because we were looking at one number as far as our number of pupils were concerned, but then it seems like the requirements for identifying them changed.
Yeah, it, it, yes, Dr. Dorsey. It, and this, I'm sure it's, I'm sure I'm not 100% accurate, but it used to largely be that parents had to fill out the form to qualify, and the form was assessed and students were identified. In the pandemic years, it, there'd be, the state had a process of just direct certification. So if students qualified for Medicaid, for instance, they would be automatically included in, in the count and other programs as well, like SNAP and CHIP and others, I think. And so we went fro, we, we went up 33%, I believe, which, and I may, I probably should double check myself on that number. But our percentage of students, or our number of students who were FARMs and now comp ed was like 30 some percent, which was pretty much on par with the jump that the state saw that year. And that was the first time I heard at the state level, a little bit of, hmm, how, how can we pay for this over, over time as well? And there was, there was some anxiety because there were some questions in meetings that we would be in as locals with state officials of, well, are these numbers valid? Where did you come up with these numbers? No, 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 you give us those numbers from like the Health Department and we turn them in. They're not some numbers we came up with. So yeah, there was that change and that dramatic jump. And now I think the state superintendent, State Department's looking at sort of further defining who qualifies anyway. But there, I don't, I don't hear or see any evidence to suggest that there would be, that the theory still holds that that was an artificial inflation of the number and it will now come back down. We're planning for, for that number into the future and going up from there.
The Medicaid example is a great one. So we have students with disabilities whose families may be looking ahead to plans for the student as they enter their, their adulthood or their post-secondary experiences with us, who may have never utilized or filled out a form for free or reduced meals. But because they were pursuing benefits down the road for their, for their child soon to be adult, that, that student or that group of students becomes part of that eligibility piece, so.
That's actually interesting. The General Assembly's even passed legislation to try to say, make there be more of a no wrong door to benefits. And it's really interesting for people to understand the philosophy we deal with. Certainly a disabled child, we want, they, they're entitled to Medicaid as they become an adult, if they're a disabled student. We were just, couples were just at ARC, you know, Arc Carroll County Development of Disabled.
Great example.
Nobody disagrees, no reasonable person disagrees with that kind of help. The problem when you look at a no wrong door philosophy is somebody might be Medicaid eligible, but their family's doing fine to provide their, their food and provide things they need, but they're Medicaid eligible. You really want people, the idea is, well, there's always people who don't get services that they need because they don't know about them, which is a fair thing if you're concerned about that. But at the same time, you don't want people going to get benefits they don't need. So, and so our philosophy is more, we'd like to make, incentivize and make things where we don't need as many of these benefits because we're having a prosperous economy. Our colleagues a lot of times focus on, how can we make sure everybody gets everything they're entitled to? And, and I understand sometimes where they come from, but that's what's happened, is there's this jump of people who qualified, even if mom and dad could always pack their lunch for them, you know, or could afford their lunch every, every day. Now they're free and reduced lunch because they're Medicaid eligible.
Yep.
And then the question was out there, I'm going to try to find the slide, that, that middle main bullet. Also, last year, we accomplished as early as anyone, and we have been approved. We got the career ladder frameworks in place for our teachers association and our ANS association. So the, the structure is there. And the, and the minimum salary requirements were met. And that was your lift that, that allowed us to get there. And we had the best hiring year we've had in a very, very long time because of that. And so, you know, thank you on many levels. But that's not the end of that work, so that, that work continues. It, it continues in real time, not formal bargaining, but in real time, work with our associations to say, okay, what's the rest of implementation look like? And that has to do with teacher time and teacher leadership roles and, and all of those components of the career ladder. And, you know, Senator Reedy's earlier point, not everything's a bad idea. We see power in having teacher leaders. We see power in professional learning at the school level. But it also comes with, you know, with logistics and maybe a cost. So, so not part of the fiscal compliance work group, but Mr. Shokne has other committees underway to look at scheduling. Because we think, be, both with fiscal compliance and with looking at implementing a, a, a teacher career ladder to its fullest, there will need to be a reexamination of, of school schedules as well. And it's a little bit early, we don't have something that we're not telling you right now. It's a little bit early to report out what that might look like. But those things combined might mean a more standard set of offerings from one high school to the next high school. Those types of things are, are things he, I think he needs the time to look at, how the day runs, the number of periods and, and that sort of thing. So all of, all of that works here. I think it might have been Delegate Rose who raised that question earlier, but I can't remember now. You know, there's work to do with, with, with the school scheduling as well. We didn't talk about early childhood, thank goodness. And then, you know, some other components. You know, we're, we're still chipping away at dual enrollment with the community college. And we're in year two of three of the, of the MOU with workforce development over the extending career counseling down through sixth grade.
The courses that are no longer available in the system? Are they being compensated through dual enrollment or not compensated? Are they being found by the community college and people are taking advantage of them that way?
We're, we're looking at all those things. We know that, you know, if we have to eliminate or, or decrease course offerings, is there a better way to still provide the course? I'll make up an example, like it might mean that we run a live class in one school, but we have the teacher teach virtually at the same time, and we could have other students in other schools participate in the course. That's just an example of what we're looking at to see if we can find, you know, smart ways to, to, to still try to preserve what we have going now. So those things are all on the table. And like Mr. O'Neill had said, we're, we're really focusing now on kind of, how do we break apart the day? Because so much of this revolves around scheduling, that structure of the, of the 60-40 split during the school day. It's really difficult to maintain our present schedules and do that in a way that ultimately works for, for a student as well.
Is part of this because of the available teachers that are not in place?
No, I, I-
Have the ability to teach yet? Or, and just one other thing is, not just teachers, but there's also administration, you know, and other services that can be challenging to put in place. You know, and I've shared this with you, I'm close with Central High School, and athletic trainers are very difficult. I mean, that is a fact. And when you have athletic trainers that are splitting time between two schools, that's the real deal. And that is, that is very difficult.
It's a shortage all the way around, all the surrounding counties too?
That's right. And it's, this is not a Carroll County issue.
No, this is not just Carroll County.
This is a state, but it has to be addressed. So teachers understand commitment in the classroom, but other services for a lot of these extracurricular or whatever you call them, after-school programs, sports, which I was a big advocate for and always am, I never would see a game without an ambulance at the game. Now, my understanding is they're not even there. So, and athletic trainers are not even on the fields. So, just throwing it out there.
Commissioner Rothstein, one of the reasons that, that we're having difficulty hiring athletic trainers is that some of our surrounding counties have begun actually offering athletic trainer as a full-time district position. And so, and we can't do that, we don't have the funding to do that. So if you're an athletic trainer and you can go to Howard County and get on staff to be
Yeah.
a trainer and get a salary and, and benefits, you're going to do that versus working for us. So that's, that's really complicated, the issue for us.
Sure has. I know I went off topic on this, but it just popped in my head, but it's a big deal, so.
You're right.
One question before you go to facilities. You have unfunded mandates, dual enrollment was one of them. You have temporarily funded stuff like workforce development. You're only funded for a couple of years or something, some, some of the positions. Does that money come out of the foundation money you talked about?
Well, great question, Commissioner. In theory, the dual enrollment money would come out of the college and career ready column of the formula. It, it does, the, the amount of money in the column of the, of CCR doesn't pay for, not just dual enrollment, but the other aspects of CCR as well. So advanced placement diploma program and then the career and tech programs. So that's partially funded, I guess I would say, by the state. The rest is funded by you, whether you want to call it the foundation or your share. Your share is more than your share if you want to view it that way, or else it's the foundation. The, the MOU with workforce development is, is for three years. It is, this is year two, so fiscal 26 is when it will end. And, and the Board of Ed funds that with a, a dollar amount out of, out of the foundation. It was $62 in the first year and would have gone up by inflation for this year and again next year. It was about 1.6 million, I think, in the first year. So we tried to structure our MOU collaboratively with, with workforce development to not embed all of those costs in workforce development. Because if it goes away, then what do, what do they do? What do you do? So, you know, some of that collaborative work created some of the positions in the school system and others of the positions at workforce development. So that'll be interesting to tie that up in a couple of years, yeah.
And then along with, and you guys, you guys are in Annapolis. Mr. Westner made a good comment. You know, this whole Kerwin thing was supposed to, it's creating the perfect school and a great education for all the kids. But all they care about is if you implement their process. They don't care about results. You can have second and third in test scores in the state, and you still need to do the same thing as the guy that's last in test scores. And is there any way to get any kind of results rewarded?
I think that's the question we're trying to figure out this year.
Like there's no accountability.
I know that's a
None.
empty answer, but it's been, we've tried to have those conversations for two years and the, and the response has been, when implementation gets here, we'll have those conversations. It's kind of like, we passed a, we have a family leave law that's coming in the next year. And it was, when, when we get there, we'll, we'll address it after the fact. And that's, that's what it's been, which is painful for us. But we've been trying to nip around the edges and then wait and prepare for when the conversation's there, that we're armed with as much information as possible to ideally change that. I mean, I, I think in, I think the, from my perspective, this is not speaking for us broadly. Like, I think the, if there are areas that the state should be picking up greater portions of funding. So I'll just give you a simple example. Her and I were just talking about this. It's like, I think if you have 45 students at, at Liberty High School, your concurrent, your, your dual enrollment rate prices go way up. Because I think that those parents are going to push those kids to dual enrollment, even if it's someone that they felt shouldn't be, or maybe isn't quite ready. But it's like, if you're going to be there with 45 other students in a classroom, like, an average parent's going to just think of it out of that way. So are there places that the state should, that, that we can work around the state, which, that they should be picking up, that we should be picking up the cost, so to speak? And then from a comp ed perspective, of which I think is really what has to happen, unless it's pushed out over multiple years, which is just flexibility. And I, I'm hesitant to go with the, like, I like the, the results argument. I'm, I'm hesitant on temporary waivers because those, that data can change and the way they test on that data can change and the way those things happen. And then all of a sudden, it becomes a downward spiral of like, you, you missed this benchmark, therefore because you missed this benchmark at this school, you have to then take students from Westminster High School and move them to Manchester Valley High School. And then Westminster High School misses its benchmark, and then you, you walk, walk through 15 years and you're still back where you, you, you end up where you started anyway. So I think that like, the, the broad performance is what has to be looked at. And then I- then I think it's just more of having a realistic view from the state around each county.
And they seem to want to change the metrics if you don't watch it. Like this year, it seemed to be so much emphasis on improvement. Well, if my school system's in last place and yours is in second place and I double my success, now I'm next to last place? I mean, you know, it's it's real results, not not the touchy feely results.
And as you have, as we have coming in, or I guess now in new state school board superintendent, you have just transition in not just elected officials, but appointed officials and kind of without a pejorative meant, but put quotes around bureaucrat, like you can see some of that that data as it matters to a different person will be the data that's responded to. And so I think as we're going to as we're having these conversations, it's picking core areas that we think we can get movement that helps the county, right? And if it helps this county, it's going to help, you know, it's going to help Frederick County. It's going to help Baltimore City, right? So and then as once we can if we are able to make progress there, then it kind of goes to you all for implementation within that progress. That's how I see it. And I again, like just the nature of where I sit, this is front and center for where I spend my time on. So.
Yeah, we just we you know, we just saw Linton Springs Elementary, Oklahoma Oklahoma Road Middle just be recognized for being one of the best in our MCAP. You increase those class sizes 50%.
Yep.
Again, anecdotally speaking and personal feeling, I question whether or not they will experience the same academic success next year.
I agree with that, but my concern to your your performance metrics is because they're first, all you can do is stay where you are, right? So like that's your best that's your measurement for success. And so I just if if we're going in with that framework, I think it's important that we're going from like measuring success either consistently and or success sits broadly, which then allows the county to make the decisions.
Yeah, I mean, maybe we shouldn't measure performance in terms of, you know, first or second or third place, but more, okay, this is the your percentage of proficiency and that needs to be climbing every year. And as long as it's climbing every year, then you should be if you're above the median and you're climbing every year or something like that, then you could get some some waivers. Because I the biggest issue, it sounds like still is the you know, the $38 million cliff, right, that we're kind of looming towards and you know, is there some combination of these things? And I appreciate Delegate Stanko, how you said about the mindset of of your your leadership in the committee, where, okay, what's important to him is class size, like class size is going to be a compelling argument for him. That's helpful for us to know because I think we can demonstrate that. Like we can demonstrate that when we had smaller class sizes, our performance was better. And as we've been increasing class sizes over time, performance has started to like even though we're still in the the top three consistently, it's still been dropping off, right? So there's a correlation there. And if if that's an argument that's compelling for some of the leadership folks, we can frame that out in a way to say, okay, what are some you use the word incentives, Mr. Whistler? Or maybe it's just, you know, flexibility or you know, what are what's the right way to phrase that to say, okay, you get a waiver so long as all of these constraints are met.
The the issue of results, Delegate Rose and I, of course, were there debating Kerwin's passage. In fact, it passed in 2020. You you would have been watching me argue with the bill against the bill on the floor on a Facebook Live when nobody else was allowed in because we literally were leaving town in a few days because of COVID. And the biggest argument was you read through that code, the whole Kerwin, everything with Kerwin. So many things you're like, yeah, yeah, that's great. That's a great like thought. It's a great goal. But there was never any metrics to say, this is how we'll know we're having success after three or four years or five years. So we've our you know, Delegate Rose and I have had that argument and we would we'll all continue to have it. They really should be results based. But I do think as you look at at it was very helpful when we were having I know my me specifically and Senator West when we met with our Senate President privately to talk about, this is what this cliff's going to do and this is the result our system gets now. Do we really want to blow everything up? And he's like, no, that totally makes no sense. Basically, I mean, I'm not I wouldn't quote him and if anybody's watching this for an article, I mean, but he agreed, like, we need to figure out, maybe we can figure out some better flexibility, which I think was very helpful in getting, you know, getting AIB to get a little bit more out of the clouds and and down to where the rubber meets the road. So I think our our goal is to try to continue to say, hey, if you're getting really good results or you're improving, the state actually has a tremendous opportunity to look at the different counties and see who's doing stuff that works. If we give some flexibility and because we may be able to share ideas and and then also again recognizing that there are counties in this state with one high school and there's counties like ours with several high schools and then there's jurisdictions with, you know, double the amount of high schools we have or more. So you know, we're we're all going to be hopefully able to engage in that conversation. Delegate Stanko is our point person because he's on the appropriations committee. So if we succeed or fail, we will.
It's also not fair on our teachers. Our teachers don't don't deserve to be ripped out of their schools and sent to another school. A teacher making the same pay as another teacher doesn't deserve to have 15 kids in a class versus 40 kids in a class. So it you know, it's an equitable thing for our for educators as well.
One other large part of this also is because I appreciate everything you're saying. You know, we're we're looking at Carroll County compared to Baltimore City compared to Garrett County. Three extremes. I mean, Garrett County's solution was to shut down a school, I believe, and consolidate, you know, completely different extreme than Baltimore City and what we have. So if you're looking at incentives at the state, that's great, but my my concern is that where is it really going to get us if blueprint is designed like Commissioner Kyler says, you know, the perfect school in the in the state regardless of where you sit. I'm not sure how we can get there. So just
It's an argument.
It is an argument for flexibility.
And local control.
And local control. That's right.
One other just quick point of interest here in this conversation about results and accountability is that just for everyone's understanding, MCAP will it will be revised again. So it will be changed. So there are pros and cons to that, of course. The pros being that hopefully all the stakeholders feel that it's a that it will be a better measure of our our student achievement. The cons being that you're not going to be able to compare how our students do on the new version versus the version we've been using. And we've had that problem in this state for a while now that it our state assessment gets revised so often that it's very difficult for us to look back and see progress over time or lack thereof. So that's just one other complicating matter that I just wanted everyone to be aware of.
You can't see trends if you if you keep changing the baseline. Yeah.
Right.
I think there's opportunity with the new superintendent. She seems like somebody who really wants to have stronger accountability and really focus on important core fundamentals. So that's an interesting point, though. We should probably try to make that in Annapolis where why are we changing this? Why are we changing it so much?
Yeah, I don't think it's a bad thing that we're going to change it again right now. I just think that we need to get it right this time and keep it that way for a while. And I agree. I think Dr. Wright is on board with that.
I have long desired to give this clicker to Mr. Shokne so that he could talk about exciting things. You ask about specifically about the Freedom and Sykesville projects. We we have an update here on the bigger things in our capital program with your support and with state support. Specifically on Freedom and Sykesville, we asked for last year and you provided local planning money. So they are in the formal semi-formal stages of planning. At the last Board of Ed meeting, I believe, the Board of Ed approved educational specifications, which is the first formal step of a process that proceeds through design up to up to eventually a bid being sent out in the in the CIP, which the superintendent will propose to the Board of Ed this evening. We will request local construction money of you with an aim ultimately of having both projects in construction in 2026. Sykesville is a two-year concept of construction, whereas Freedom is a one-year concept of construction. And just as a reminder, we we tend to ask for local construction money in recent years prior to state construction money because it we we need the time, the lead time to order equipment, order things, have them have them ready to go. So that's where they stand. As a reminder, it was a five-classroom addition for Freedom and a 10 class academic classrooms and three related area classrooms for Sykesville. It's technically it's two components of an addition at at Sykesville Middle.
Isn't Freedom taking away the trailers?
So Commissioner, so so again, I desire nothing I desire nothing more than to give the clicker to Mr. Shokne. Originally, so using the data that came out of something that was called SARC or the Southern Area Redistricting Committee, the plan at that time, the numbers at that time would have it's kind of loose to say, but would have suggested that the five-classroom addition could have replaced the the portables, the relocatables.
Right.
The more current enrollment projections would suggest that we're going to have to make some decisions about whether those relocatables can go or not after the after the addition or if they do, what that would mean for class sizes.
When do we expect to make that decision? Or when do we expect for you to make that decision?
I would say the the Board will have to come to terms with that at the time we're we're wrapping up construction, whether whether those relocatables go or not. And and again, we talked about this, I think, a good bit when when the Board voted on educational specifications. This was this was always step one of a more comprehensive look in the southern area of the county. So after SARC, the Board elected to take this this step and then once the additions were done to look at the bigger picture once more with the more current data. So as soon as the construction finishes, I assume we'll reassemble in some way to say, you know, where do we go next in the southern area of the county? What do we do next in the southern?
So it's possible Freedom's addition could get opened and completed and the still and the school still be technically overcrowded. That's possible.
It's possible. Yeah, it the the enrollment projections now would suggest that and what's the word we use would suggest that the school in time would have five classes per grade level instead of four. Is that right? Is that right?
A five round?
Five rounds. Thank you. Five rounds versus four.
And also, I mean, we have to remember too, the the committee redistricting committee was very vocal on they did not want to redistrict at all. You know, down on the southern end. They wanted to maintain their community-based school. So I mean, because you know, what many of us have been through, you know, we understood that. We understood what that community was feeling and what they were saying. So I mean, is it something that further on down the road might have to take a hard, hard look at and say, you know what? Sorry, countywide, it has to be done. Will it be the the fixing of everything? Probably not. But I mean, it's it's a start and it's this is what the community had asked for. And I think it's very important we listen to what finally listen to what the community is saying, saying, please don't tear us apart.
Well, I think we've I appreciate that. And I think we have been listening to what the community's been saying, not just finally, but for a long time. We have not redistricted in the county and that community for a long I I don't know when, to be honest. You may know. I have no idea when. Yeah.
The closest to redistricting was when schools were closed.
Yes.
Closest things Carroll County's done to it.
So you know, this, you know, and I appreciate, but when you say finally listening, no, we have been listening. And that's why we're doing the additions in Freedom and Sykesville Middle because of that. So this is, you know, a part of the the listening that, you know, and I appreciate the superintendent doing the town halls, saying, what do the communities want? And that's what they want and that's what you're delivering. So.
Thank you. And now in the next seven minutes, Mr. Shokne will present the rest of the agenda.
One question on facilities. Earlier, you mentioned charter. Who owns that building? Who owns that land? Who's responsible for the physical building for a charter school?
The 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 entity that would become the charter school operator.
So not CCPS? They furnish teachers, they furnish all that, but not?
We would so a charter school in Maryland is maybe a bit unique still in that it's a public school since the was it 2006 law? I know it was Governor Ehrlich's term. And and a charter school has to comply with everything that a public school does, testing, achievement, collective bargaining, you know, whatever. We provide the charter, the Board of Ed would provide the charter school requisite per pupil funding. Mine there at least used to be a percentage that could be reserved for administrative costs, a small percentage, but basically the per pupil funding for the students who end up in that charter school. And again, it's sort of that catch-up thing in some ways in the first year.
Thanks. And I won't interrupt again. We have six minutes.
Six minutes.
Take it away, Mr. Shokne.
Silver Oak Academy was next. It was I think we've already addressed that. Are there any other standing questions on that? All right, I'll I'll jump as quickly as I can into into cell phones.
Mr. Shokne, I'll take 30 seconds, so for your time.
You can have as much as you would like.
Just so just so that the group is aware, we do have a presentation on our MCAP results and the discussion around that happening at our regular business meeting at 5 o'clock. So if we don't get to it in this group, I just want to encourage everyone to to listen to that discussion, either live or the recorded version, and you'll be able to get all the details.
And I'm going to take another 30 seconds because I'm going to invite anyone to fill that last spot over there. And please, it's open. We are still having you all invited over here to be the ex officio for commissioners. So that way you'll know exactly what is going on.
I have a prior obligation.
So Mr. Shokne, is it possible to cut to the chase?
I'm going to cut to the chase.
I know the commissioners asked for this to be one of the agenda items. I'm curious to know what is it that you want to accomplish?
I'm trying.
My big question about this. I'm trying to think of the right terms. Does the administration and each school have the intestinal fortitude to enforce it?
Yes.
That's what's going to matter. That's what's going to matter.
Overwhelming, yes. And that was the big piece that I hit with home. I meet with all the administrators over the course of the summer, that we shall be consistent and we all shall also set the example for our students. And and the other big piece with that, and I've said this publicly before, but we also need support from our families
Yes.
to keep up their end of the bargain in this as well, too. So essentially, a lot of work happened over the course of this year. We sent out surveys. We heard from our kids, our students. They overwhelmingly want access to cell phones. We heard from our parents. They overwhelmingly want their students to have access to cell phones during the day. From our staff at the elementary level, they seem to be satisfied with what we were doing. But about half of staff at the secondary level, middle and high, were comfortable and half recommended changes. So I'm having a difficult time getting oh, there we go. I'm going to jump right to this chart here. So this just summarizes everything and the changes that we did. So based on the feedback that we got through our surveys, we made some changes to what's in red up there is that to make a long story short, our old cellphone regulations and policy were written in a time before we had universal access in our schools to devices. Now that we have that, there's no need for cell phones for instructional purposes. So the big change up there went to no. There is no need during the day for students at any point in time to have a device out for instruction. Now, we made some very small exceptions for students that might be diabetic, who might, you know, track their 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 blood sugar levels through that or other very specific things. But they have to be documented through a health plan or an IEP or 504. So we were able to address that. But that is the crux of the change that is different. And yes, we shall be consistent. We also we said a very clear message to principals. I also created a presentation that every principal used back with their staff in the school to help make things. And we've definitely been communicating with our stakeholders along the way. But again, that is the most important thing is that we are consistent with.
And I think what other jurisdictions have seen is six months from now, they start relaxing. And so you got it covered.
We're going to follow up and we're going to stay on top of them over the over the course of the year.
I've visited several schools already this year. I've had teachers come up yesterday at Man Valley and said, thank you, thank you, thank you for the change in the guidelines. I talked to a class yesterday of high school students and they gave me thumbs up on on that school policy. It's less distraction. You know, they're all focused on their classwork. And I also have been at a middle school. They thought it was great. And I've been to Career and Tech and everybody has given us pretty much a thumbs. career in tech, and everybody has given us pretty much a thumbs up on that. But you are correct, Mr. Kyler, we need to start at the top, and they need to enforce it, and you know what? Then it's a smooth sailing.
Yeah, I think we actually tried to give them the flexibility in the past, right? Like, the teachers to handle it as they saw fit in their classroom, but they didn't want to be the bad guys, right? And have issues with enforcing it. So it was like, okay, we'll be the bad guys. This is the new policy, and this is what you're going to follow, and it seems to be working.
There's the bad guy.
Yeah, the bad guy, that's okay, I don't mind being the bad guy. But our schools also did a lot of work as the summer came to an end, as they were getting ready for the start of the school year, to really communicate to families the why behind it. Obviously, we want students engaged, available for learning, and not distracted by their device. And obviously, with anything, I anticipate growing pains, but we will work through those, but we will be consistent.
And it was good as a, you know, as a parent, you know, I heard from many of my friends, and even getting emails myself, you know, from the principal, like, this is the new cellphone policy and what we'll be doing in the school. And a lot of the parents, you know, were telling me, oh, thank God, I can't believe this is happening, and I'm excited, I'm glad, teachers are, you know, were very appreciative of that, too. And, yeah, there has been some pushback occasionally from some parents, like, you know, my kid's going to have their cellphone on him, and if I text them, they better answer me. I'm sorry, but, you know, there needs to be, right? There needs to be accountability to that. Like, you know, there was an example given that a parent had called their child to let them know their grandfather died while they were sitting in the middle of a classroom, and it's completely inappropriate, and there's no reason for it.
We're here to help families. We've navigated really complex situations with families, and we're here to support them and kids, but reach out to us, reach out to the front office, we'll connect, we'll engage in that scenario. We can engage with, obviously, with our school counselors and our support staff to try to help that student way better than a student receiving a text during the day about something.
Exactly.
Mr. Shokni, if I may ask, the enforcement and compliance, how does that look like? If a student's in violation, is there a procedure for enforcement? What's the penalty?
So we can't, one piece with all of this, law prohibits us from having a one-size-fits-all approach to an infraction. So, a lot of times, citizens will say to me, you know, Nick, why isn't it just a three-strikes and you're out policy? And because we have to, we have to look every situation individually. But we handle cellphone infractions just like we would any other infraction. If a teacher sees a student with a cellphone out when it shouldn't be out, the first thing is that teacher says something to that student, put your cellphone away, okay? If it becomes a growing problem, that teacher's going to reach out to that child's parent to say, you know, little Nick is not doing what he needs to be doing during the day. And then from that, you know, escalating it to, you know, involvement from the school administration and those kinds of things. But we handle, we'll handle these infractions just like we all do, and the first thing is that teacher communicating with the kid, you know, followed up with the parent as necessary, and then engaging with, and our parents are great, and a lot of times, we just got to communicate that to them about, hey, you know, again, Nick had his cellphone out at a time that's not established, and families, you know, the vast majority of the time work with us on that.
Right, it's not like complicated, you got to fill out forms or anything like that.
Each school's doing a little something different, and I've let, I've still left some autonomy on the schools on how they go about problem-solving and those kinds of things, but essentially, that's your typical first, you know, first response. A lot more layers to it than that, but, you know, teacher talking to the kid, teacher talking to the parent, teacher engaging with the administration.
We're not going to give up if a student is particularly difficult or has a specific situation. There's nothing that restricts us from continuing to discipline the student to not have a cell phone.
Of course not, yeah, no, this is where all of our normal disciplinary procedures kick in and those kinds of things.
Having given up on you.
Growing up, Nick went over by four minutes.
Clearly, he's the one to blame for it.
Try. Yeah, and when you come to our place, we're going to do our part first. In all honesty, you've answered most, and I think I'm going to ask Chris Swam if he can get us the piece of your tonight's meeting that talks about the score.
Sure.
And that way, we can all get to see it. And great discussion, great topics, and, thank you.
Thank you.
You're still all invited.
Okay, before we go, Mrs. Herbert, may I take the liberty to share a comment?
Yes, you may.
Certainly, we thank all of you for being interested in our students and in our county, and we appreciate all you've done and all you continue to do. But I just wanted to take a moment just to thank all of you, each of the commissioners, our state delegation, and had wonderful folks involved. You've all shown so much kindness to me and to my family and the loss of my husband, and I really wanted you to know, I mean, you're a captive audience right now, so I really want you to know that all of your acts of kindness, your cards, your calls, your messages, the flowers, everything was just very much appreciated. So, thank you very much, on behalf of my family and myself.
And Dr. Dorsey, thank you, and I always try to interject, I love Carroll County, and things like that are one of the reasons. And I've talked to other counties, and they are shocked that these three entities can meet and people show up.
Oh, it's wonderful.
You know, they're saying, we can't do that in our county, so it's, thank you very much, and thank you.
And, you know, it's one of those things where you really feel the support, and, again, I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Dorsey.
All right. Thanks, everyone.
You got to bang a hammer or something, or are we done? They goos. They're winning again, right?
No, they lost.
No, they lost.
They won last night.
I should, I should keep up.
Please take some snacks on your way out.